Okay, we're back live from executive section. No action taken.
I just have one final item. As you know, the KAC conference is coming up. It'll be the second week of December, night to the 11th. On the 9th, they're having a big gala to celebrate their 50th anniversary. So anybody that has a one-day registration for Tuesday, where the full conference registration is automatically registered for that event, nice dinner, they're requesting cocktail attire. You know, they're gonna make it kinda fancy because it's their 50th anniversary. So in doing that, they're also asking for, or allowing counties and other organizations to send quick video clips of congratulations on their anniversary that we can record and send in, and they will have that play. So today, after the end of the commission meeting at 12:15, I have invited department heads and staff, anyone that wants to, to meet here at 12:15 so we can record a quick little video that just says, "Congratulations on 50 years KAC from here."
Maybe we should do it outside by our sign.
If we don't freeze it, that's sure.
Well, if you have a practice run in here and go outside.
I'm fine with that.
I think it would look nicer by our sign.
Yeah, I thought that, yeah.
Be pretty proud of them, yeah.
Depends on how many people show up. I mean, I made it voluntary. Anybody that was interested could come over, but I'm not sure who will. I didn't ask for our SVPs or anything, but I'm hoping we'll get a few. And that's all I have today.
Thank you.
Enjoy your Veterans Day holiday tomorrow, and we'll see you guys then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I noticed that Tammy has a novel on her, of course.
I know.
Oh, I was up at the hospital, do some blood work the other day, and I was waiting at a clinic, and Jeff Klein stopped me in. He goes, "Hey, you got a minute? I'll show you the electrical we're working on." Oh my goodness. It is.
Hello, hello. How's everybody doing?
Okay.
It smells like coffee in here.
I was gonna say, something smells like coffee or something.
Caramel coffee or something.
Yeah.
Ooh, it smells good.
It's like something, something's got something running in it.
Forgot to do this first. Would you mind going over there?
Nope. Okay. Are you guys ready?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Tammy Robinson, Finance Director. I have the monthly update with the financials and a couple of other items to discuss, as well as consideration of amended budget. So the first thing, Louisa had sent you an email concerning a letter of support for Ata Bus. So I have those here, if you guys are good with signing that form. There's three of them, so if each one of you want to sign and pass.
I made a motion that we sign the support letter for Ata Bus.
I'm moving to sign a letter of support for Ata Bus. And say aye.
And the next items are the CIP authorization request forms. You've already approved all of these. It's just having the chairman sign those, so there's no action needed, other than just the signature.
I wasn't here when you guys approved that, so I probably shouldn't have signed that.
It's just the chairman.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes it easier.
Yep. You ready for me to pick them up? I'll grab them. Keith got all the rest?
This is the ones.
Well, there's four different pages, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, sign all four?
Yeah, because there was four approvals.
Thank you. Okay. Then the next thing we have are the cash balances between the Treasurer's Office and Finance and Inside Finance. It's both the cash balance of CIC, as well as the GL balance of CIC. So the document in front of you is the cash balance in CIC. You can see it's at .33, 228, 182, and 95 cents. It tells you the difference of cash on hand, the CDs, the demand or checking accounts, and then the state investment pool. And then the Treasurer's report. This is what they do in Sherry's office. So you can see at the bottom of the page, it's that same amount, that .33, 228, 182, 95, and the breakdowns between her CDs and the cash on hand, as well as the checking accounts and the OMIT. And then lastly, we have the Fund Status Report, and this is the GL portion. And so on page nine, you can see that same balance of the .33, 228, 182, 95. Are there any questions on cash balance? Okay. And then the next thing we have is the building cash flow. You can see at the end of October, we would be 83.33% into the year. And on the left-hand side, the cash reconciliation box shows you what our beginning cash was, the revenue we've taken in, the expenditures, and then what our ending unencumbered cash balance is. And then that $12,000 is for the boiler room doors at the courthouse. So with that taken into account, we have $466,593 available for other projects. On the right-hand side, it shows you our budget authority. And so you can see we're at 48.33% of our budget having been spent. In October, we spent $20,444. Are there any questions on the building cash flow? Okay. The next one is CIP. Again, same mark, 83.33% into the year. You can see we have $7,853.02, which is our interest income. And along with that is the motor vehicle tax, some delinquencies that had come through, and with the expenditures going out of $70,147. So if you follow the cash reconciliation box on the left-hand side, you can see our ending unencumbered cash is the 4.2 million. We have remaining approved projects just over $802,000. That gives us almost $3.4 million. And then right below that, when you take the reserve funds into account, we have just under $2.5 million available for other projects. On the right-hand side, it's our budget authority. So you can see we spent 36.98% of our budget. And then on the second page, this is the detailed information of the projects. And the ones in blue are the ones that are completed. And if you go clear to the right-hand side, it shows you if they came in under or over the approved estimate. Are there any questions on the CIP?
What's the Tep Point minus 100? Is that that Heritage Fund grant?
Right. So we approved the full project, knowing that we would get the $100,000 back. So that 100 is just a marker, and we have received that full $100,000 back now. So we're almost done with Phase 2. And if you recall, after we finish Phase 2, we will be going out to sell some state, historical state tax credits, which should give us back around $75,000 to go against a project as well.
courthouse, what's the minus?
It does, a lot of people comment on it, too.
I'm really hopeful that this is before the end of the year because that's, they're gonna be wanting them right now for this tax year. So I did reach out to Kalen the other day, and we talked about that just a little bit. So I'll keep you posted on that.
Yep, thank you.
The next document is your sales tax report. Again, 83.33% into the year. And you can see we've exceeded what we budgeted by 15.33%. And compared to last year, we've taken in $167,463 more in sales tax in the County General and $78,672 more in the hospital dedicated tax than 2024. We're at 91.4% in that hospital dedicated tax. That's good, because that is what we're using primarily to pay on that 2016 hospital bond.
When is that over with, in 2034?
The hospital one? No, it's actually 2040, but it's callable 2032. And actually, part of it is callable next year. And so I am having some discussions with Greg Berenberg, who's our financial advisor. And we're looking at the numbers to see how they look, simply because we know we're dealing with something on the jail. And because of that, we're running the numbers just to see what it looks like, based on what we could call, what we could look at defusing, and what we have in reserves to go against that. So I do not have any even preliminary information on that yet, but once I have, went through that with them, and I have something solid to bring to you, I will at that point. But we are looking at it, just so that it'll give us some planning and what we want to do going forward with the jail. Any other questions? Okay. This next one is the year-to-date expenditure activity. Again, the 83.33% into the year. The ones in blue are the ones that have exceeded that 83.33%. And you can see the two are Library and Economic Development. We've talked about those since July, knowing that because of the timing of the expenditures going out, that those may be higher than what we would expect, but that they would catch up by the end of the year so that we were not exceeding the budget. Still confident in those two. We will be talking about amending budgets, so I'll go over that here in just a little bit. But it doesn't have anything to do with these that are in blue. Are there any questions on any of the expenditure activity? Okay. And then this next report, it gives you that year-to-date expenditure activity by department inside the general fund. And you can see that none of those are highlighted in blue this time, which is great news. They're starting to catch up. There's been a few that we needed to get caught up, and we have got to that point. So overall, we're at 77.61% into the year in the general fund. Any questions on any of those? This is the activity by month. So if there's any that you want to ask questions on, you see an amount that you're questioning, or do you want some extra information, please let me know. And then the next one is the year-to-date revenue budget activity. And that's just to show you what we budgeted in comparison to what we've taken in. Again, there's not any concerns on there at this point. However, if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if I can't answer them today, I will get that information for you. Anything on that? Okay. Well, this is what I was talking about as far as looking at amending budgets. I had sent you some information just so that you had it ahead of time to look at before we had any discussion. The main reason I'm here today is because Community Corrections was required by the state to separate their reimbursement funds from their juvenile and their adult. And in doing so, there's been no guidance from the state directly. And I've also reached out to peers to see how they were handling it as far as that fund and whether it's required to be budgeted. The only thing the state will say is, "If you don't see that it's exempt, then you should just budget it." And so with that in mind, I am more comfortable coming to you to request that we do a budget amendment for that specific reason, just so we don't get caught in an issue of being unaware or not enough knowledge on what we needed to do. And because we're amending that budget, I would also like to request that you consider going ahead and amending the general fund. It's not over. I don't even think it's going to go over. But I'm not a great gambler. And just to ensure that we don't have anything come in in those first three months, from January to March, I would like to go ahead and amend it as a safeguard to protect us from having a budget violation, should that, should something happen.
That'd be a lot cleaner for the eye.
It would be.
It's just transparency.
Right. And the thing that I really want to point out, and this is really for the public, is that they understand that this isn't in addition to any of their property taxes. That is against budget, I mean, against budget law. You cannot increase property taxes. So the only thing that we are increasing is based off of revenue that we haven't previously budgeted, that we did get in. And so that is what would be allowing us to increase our expenses. The other thing is, is just a reminder to the public, just because we amend the budget, it gives us that authority, but it does not necessarily mean it's our intent to spend all those dollars. So those are two points that are important for the public to understand in amending the budget. The memo gives you the statute that pertains to budget law. And the other thing, the reason I'm coming now in early November is because we still have to publish a notice in the paper. It still has to be in there 10 days before the hearing. And so with that in mind, the intention was to have this to the paper, to be published on the 26th. So it would have to be to them on the 20th, and then we would have the hearing on December 8th at 11:00 a.m. That's what we have scheduled, if you approve this budget amendment being published.
I just want to talk about that because I feel very sorry for Chrissanne and her peers, that the state has really, really messed with them. And we've talked about that in our Community Corrections. They give them no guidance. It's just, you know, figure it out yourself.
Really.
And then they don't know if they're gonna do it right or not. So I think that this is something that we should do for protection, you know, just so we have it done. Transparency and insurance, I guess. So I'm giving the motion to go ahead and amend the budget.
And I think, okay, I'll, part of my discussion would be that that's something we need to talk to our legislators about.
Exactly.
And we have our work in the works.
Yeah, and definitely have Chrissanne there. And maybe have something in writing that they can take, so they have it. Because it is very confusing, you know, on what they do and what they don't do. And a lot of people don't, especially because we have, you know, new ones that haven't been in there very long. But, you know, the difference between Community Corrections and Court Services. You know, they think one, you know, Court Services is funded by the state, and Community Corrections is funded by Department of Corrections. So it's very confusing, so.
Well, and I did talk to Chrissanne about this, just to make sure she was good with me bringing this to you. The thing is, is the other ones, the other budgets she has, she has to give to the state. She does it on their timeline, which is the, you know, the July to June 30th. She's funded with grant dollars, but they want nothing to do with this reimbursement fund that she has. And because of that, it's nowhere, other than here. And that's really because we're here and we're overseeing it. I think it's the best idea to go ahead and budget it.
Now, it's not just this county.
No. No. Everybody's having, every judicial district is having issues.
But I mean, she covers four counties.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, but, you know, they, everybody, she's not the only one having that issue.
Statewide.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion.
I'll second it.
I'm moving to go ahead and amend the budget with a published date, or turned into the paper by the 20th, and a public hearing on December 8th at 11:00 a.m. All fairs say aye.
Aye. Okay. And I will be out Tuesday and Wednesday for the CPM. Not Tuesday and Wednesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And then of course, we're out here tomorrow. So I will be back on Friday with chili. Hopefully, you're all there to enjoy it. Oh, you're gonna miss the chili?
I am.
I had to cook it this weekend to make sure I still knew how.
But I'm excited I get to eat at 1587.
What?
Get to eat at 1587 restaurant.
Hey, you're real?
That's exciting.
I'll let you know about this.
Maybe they'll be there, and you can take a picture.
Yeah. So this is bi-week.
Right. There you go.
Well, I guess that was last week. They're probably training this week.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Zohar, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
That'll be exciting.
I know. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Dan Zeller. I am the jail major at the Gary County Sheriff's Department. I was asked today by the sheriffs to come by, because all of them were gone, to give the bi-weekly report that covers October 22nd to November 4th. During this time, we had average daily population of 109. We had a total accidents of 21. We assisted outside agencies of 40 of them. During this time, we also had a battery slash assault. We have one to count on it. During this time, we had zero burglaries and zero motor vehicle thefts, with also zero sex offenses. During this time, we had a total of 47 citations with 169 civil papers served. We also had six domestic incidents with two drug misconfigurations. For the jail side, we had 15 transports that went out during that time. We had one shots fired with one theft call. A total of 203 traffic stops with 32 arrests and zero weapons violations. During the total primary incidents, we had 541, with additional calls of service of 132, which gave us a grand total of 673.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes, sir.
You might pass on to your boss. I know we get these reports bi-weekly. After the first of the year, I'd like to know just a total count.
Okay. We can definitely get you guys that number.
Yeah. And I know that way, probably the first year.
Yes, sir.
It'd be interesting for the public to know just how much you do.
Oh, yes, sir. We can definitely get you those numbers. They should be back on Wednesday. And I'll definitely send them an email and get you all those numbers by the first of the year for you, like, guys, so.
I appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome. Is there anything else you guys need?
You're doing a great job.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
What about the deer? Has there been, I see going Manhattan, Whitefield, that, you know, I have a number of deers, deer that have been.
You're asking the wrong person.
I just wondered, just to be like, there's been a lot.
You see that big old plaque in the road?
Yeah, it's just funny that you, you know, you go back and forth to these places, and then one day, then you sit through your floor, you know, it just seems like overnight, man.
We had.
Curious with the.
That driveway, Maryland, over woods, you know. And it was last, oh, it was last Monday, at 6:30 that morning, in Maryland. I thought, he was driving, looked up the window, it was a big old buck walking down my driveway. I mean, just.
Last night, when I went to St. Mary's, there was one, you know, right stand and then like Nicole Child, where they lose mountains right across in their, in their yard. And it was headed toward.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Well, I about hit one on the way to town this morning.
I know that sheriff and undersheriff and captain of court are all out hunting and.
Guys, get a home.
I'm not a hunter, so when I get to talking, I have.
So you get to stay.
Yeah, I have no idea what they're talking about, so.
Well, Dan, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Guys, if you need anything, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Do a good job.
I must have pages of the fact that you guys don't have. I've got a million pages here.
I do have them.
I do.
Yes.
Well, she sent all the stuff about CIP, too. Well, there's two of those. Two or three or whatever, too, so. I'm just trying to. Budgets, I think it's double, too.
How's it going, Billy?
Pretty slow.
It's, you got any update on that?
I don't know what you're supporting. For Ata Bus?
They're still taking payments for a couple more minutes, but I got this from the treasurer. And she had collected through about 11 o'clock, probably. 489, 625.
189.
But that includes, if the property sold for over the taxes owed, we'll have to refund that. And then our administrative fee is part of that for the filing and all those things. And then we'll have to pay the auctioneer. And so some of the costs haven't come out of that, and that hasn't been broken up yet. So next Monday, we can have a. I think she should. Yeah. She was still taking money. Yeah. Felt like it went well, so everything. Learned some lessons.
There you go.
Yeah, I think it went as well as, yeah. I was pleased with the crowd. I thought it was a pretty good crowd. Yes. Lot more than when they used to have on the courthouse desk. Yeah, there were a lot of people, and the auctioneer did a good job. Yeah. I thought they did a good job, too.
We have a lot of questions about it.
You did?
At the office. And I'd say, well, you need to talk to the county council about that. Well, I've already talked, I've already talked to her. No? Okay.
I think people were real confused about redemptions, and that the list is not the list until. The day, pretty much the day of the sale. The day of the sale. Yeah. Yeah, there were some people that came in like, "How come this property isn't on there?" They probably came in, paid their taxes.
Yeah. And they can just come in and pay one year, right?
Not after it's filed.
Not after it's filed, okay.
Yeah, then they'd be perpetually behind, two years. Yeah, then they'd be perpetually behind two years, three years.
Start it up.
They can pay up to like the day that we were putting it on the site.
And they can just pay a year.
They can do like up to back.
Okay. And next week on the seventeenth, remember the canvas is at nine. And then we just have Crystal and then Public Works will be here in the Health Department. And I had asked, when I'd sent out the agenda last week, about anybody that you guys wanted to see. And you want to see Nikki Dean before the end of the year?
What do you guys think?
We're gonna wait till January so she can give a yearly.
Okay.
I mean, I.
That's fine, yeah.
You don't do that?
It was just one that I, it might.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
Yeah, we can get to that for the first of the year. That might be fair. The only other one, do we want to have Troy Levingston come in and give her a report?
Well, not that he, we had asked him to do that. Yeah, I want him to come in for the.
Oh, well, would that be that, right?
Okay.
Or else we wouldn't know what he looked like.
Yeah.
Well, we've been wanting all the other departments. I think they all shared all the time. So they've got that interchange. The commissioner's gonna go to that for the flyover on everything.
You guys got an invite?
Mm-hmm. And you're gonna go K-2000 interchange project?
On Wednesday, I guess it is.
Yeah.
What time is it out Wednesday?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, ten thirty at the Station Four.
That's this Wednesday?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, all three. Two or more commissioners will be attending. So originally, it was supposed to be on Thursday. And then K-Doc got with me and said, excuse me. I said that Senator Moran wanted to attend. So to accommodate him, they had to move it to Wednesday. And I assume that depending on how the government shutdown goes, that he'll be there. Parking is gonna be at night.
Yeah.
You could park on the road to.
Yeah, I would think you can park on Hart Street or.
That's what the email said, to park on, hopefully, the road right there.
Yeah, well, if it's any permanent weather, then they said they'll move it to August.
No. It's supposed to be nice, though.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's supposed to be back up.
It's a warm, yeah, yeah.
Is that DQ? Definitely. I'll send them to you then. Oh, it went on. I didn't.
I would like to watch. I can't get that changed. There's since daylight, see.
Okay, yeah, okay, thanks.
So who's still in the Veterans Day ceremony then on Thursday? Who got that?
A Roy's group, that, um, boy.
Oh, okay.
I hope people, I hope people attended.
Veterans Alliance is in charge tomorrow night. They're offering us.
Oh, I thought it was Roy's group.
I thought when I went, it was, yeah, I thought it was set up. I didn't know it was Roy's.
Oh, maybe I got me wrong. I know it was Roy, reminded me when I saw him at the back practice, so.
Mine might be for the meal.
Oh, maybe, yes, that's right.
That's what you usually ask money for.
Yeah.
I guess this is short meeting today. Hard time to get some errands done.
There you go.
Yeah, when Betsy said she didn't have anything to add, I went, all right. Oh, that's a bad idea.
Okay, good.
No.
This show is thirty-four.
Goodness.
But that might not be updated. Thirty-five.
It was nineteen.
It was like thirty-two.
Yeah.
Whoever's taking the video better be quick. So Betsy, you want to discuss that issue that you were talking about with Lance Pester?
We haven't gotten anything, and I don't think it's a county issue. Frankly, I mean.
Is that a civil issue?
Yes.
So I can let him know that he needs to proceed with his attorney.
I would recommend that.
I had said something to Trish earlier, too, about the lead JC, the city-county session that they're having in January. That what, I don't know what has been done in the past was expectations that all three of us will go to do that class? Or will you go as chairman? Or how, is that gonna work? It's from Kelly, too. He sent it, gosh.
It was a.
He sent it, yeah.
What day was that?
He sent it June sixteenth. The date is January thirteenth is the, you know, the session for lead JC where the, you know, they'll come. I just wanted to know what, how that goes. Are we all three gonna be there and speak? Or you can, I, I had replied back whenever acknowledged the email. But then I saw that it said in this email, one of the commissioners, I said, oh, I don't want to speak. But keep that the expectation is you are going. So I said, I'll, I'll, I'd be happy to do whatever, but, so I just wondered what was, you know, before that email back.
Well, would we change office?
Yeah, well, reorganize.
Reorganize, absolutely. By then, and then.
Well, wouldn't you still, for the past year, for talking about what's going on, would you not still report on that?
Absolutely.
I mean, is that what, I don't know what, what has gone on in the past.
I usually talk about the hospital, the finance stuff, just changes we've made.
Right, right. But she was asking, do all three of us?
Oh, oh, no, we just go, we usually just want, oh, when they do that. I thought you were asking what.
Well, I was asking, I was asking both.
Oh, okay.
Because he sent it to all three of us.
Yeah, I don't care. I'll go if you guys don't want to go. I mean, I, I'm pretty flexible with my time most of the time, but.
On that note, so for next Monday night.
Next Monday night, we're doing the day.
Yeah, but.
Joy?
Oh, okay.
Oh, I did the ABC updating them. I can't remember what else I told you.
The other was tax.
Tax, yeah.
And so I talked to Kim about that. So he's got those two done. Is there anything else that you can think of? Because I couldn't.
So the joint meeting?
Yeah. I thought they were in, City was gonna talk about NRP.
Oh, yeah, I thought they were gonna. Maybe put that on the agenda to do. Then influence stuff.
Yeah, I told people that it still has to be approved by the state, but that was what we were gonna be doing. It's approved.
Well, that's the two items I told Kim for us.
Yeah, I don't think.
He hadn't heard anything back from the school district at that time.
We done?
Yeah, I was informed somebody might be here, a couple people today, but I don't think they're gonna show.
About what?
Public comment. So, yeah, I guess if we don't have any other business, we're adjourned. And we will do our video.